All right, thank you. We'll get started here at seven o'clock. Virtual Record Board Meeting, the Melvindale School Board of Education, Monday, September 13th, 2021, it's 7:00 PM. So, to the pledge, Matt, you want to do a roll call, please?
Yep, thank you, Jim. Karen Lang?
Here, Allen Park.
Hamden Herrera?
Present, Allen Park.
Jim Berry?
Present, Allen Park.
Matthew Rader, North Carolina, Concord. Alex Antoski?
Present, Allen Park.
Amber Cochran?
Present, Allen Park.
Michael Morgan?
Mike was there. What happened? We lose him?
Here in Melvindale.
Okay.
Thank you. We have a quorum, Jim.
Thank you, sir. We'll continue on. At this time, I need a motion to approve of the agenda as presented. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion, Karen.
Karen, do I have a support?
Support, Jim.
Support, ma'am. Any additions?
Not at this time, Mr. Berry.
All right, thank you. Okay, at this time, I need a roll call to approve.
Karen Lang?
Yes.
Hamden Herrera?
Yes.
Jim Berry?
Yes.
Matthew Rader, yes. Alex Antoski?
Yes.
Amber Cochran?
Yes.
Michael Morgan?
Yes.
It passes, Jim.
All right, thank you. We'll continue on. We'll go over to Dr. Sra, Cardinal Care Honorees. Dr. Sra?
Good evening, everyone. So, we have resurrected after summer vacation our Cardinals Care nominees. And Laura Delinsky has nominated Billy Lamb. Billy Lamb is one of our bus drivers. I hear wonderful things about Billy. And, you know, she's all about the kids and goes the extra mile. Laura, would you like to talk on behalf of Billy, please?
Yes, I would. You know, I've known Billy for a long time, it seems like. And she works in transportation. She's been a member of the Cardinal family for many years. But what impresses me the most about Billy is that she always goes over and above with a smile on her face and kind words for everyone. Billy has volunteered using her own time to drive a bus so Strong students could participate in charity events. Also, I need to say something about Navka C. Also, she's done that for us and she participates in the charity events. They walk with us and they're just fantastic. But last year, what really impressed me was she just showed what a caring person she is. We had the sixth graders come in for testing, for them step testing. And they were so nervous and uncertain about being there and about what bus they needed to be on to go home. And the students were, we were waiting outside and they, a couple of the kids started crying because they didn't know what bus to be on and they were upset. Well, Billy noticed, jumped off her bus to find out what was going on, and then offered to drive each one of the upset students home. And especially during last year, it just made my heart swell after witnessing that kindness and giving spirit. I really realized that I can have been surprised because that's the kindness and compassion Billy Lamb has always demonstrated. So that's why I nominated Billy. I think she's just wonderful. So, thank you. I'm gonna call.
Good job, Billy. You're muted, though. We can't hear you.
Thank you, Billy. And Navka. Thank you, Billy. Billy, did you have anything to say?
Ms. Lamb, there should be a little microphone at the bottom of your screen. If you click it, it'll unmute you.
Okay. I didn't even know I hit it.
There you go.
Am I here?
Yep.
Quit shaking your head, Mike, up there in the corner. Thank you so much for all your kind words. That was very sweet of you. I love being a Cardinal, so, thank you.
We love having you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Billy.
Thank you. Billy, for all your kindness towards our students. Do I have anything to say? Like, how sweet I am? Okay.
You did a wonderful job. You deserved it.
Just a joke. I'm just kidding. Okay. Enough.
Thank you. Okay, our next Cardinal Care recipient, on behalf of Michelle Angelari, is Mary De Palma. Is Michelle here? So, I had the opportunity to work with Mary for quite a few years when I was the principal at Strong. And even before that, she was always the person who took care of the preschool program, the safety program with the fire department, and always did a beautiful job. Mary does a beautiful job and commits to anything that she's committed to. She does it and shows our students that she cares. She's instrumental in our sixth grade camp. She is the person who's in charge of getting together the seniors that work with our sixth grade students. And many of you have gone to sixth grade camp and you know how it operates like a fine, it runs like a fine machine. Anyway, so, I've had the opportunity to work with Mary and she does a beautiful job. But Mary has worked with the Kiwanis Club of Melvindale for years to provide a wonderful two-week preschool program promoting safety practices. With the folding of the Melvindale Kiwanis Club, Mary took on the planning, development, and teaching of the course this year. Mary took on this huge project and is also working to secure funding and administration of the program in the future. As a former parent of four students that have gone through the program with many, I truly appreciate her efforts and passion for teaching how to be safe. My kids remembered facets of some of the lessons and repeated the safety protocols years later. A big thank you to the district for securing funding for this year so that our students experience such important lessons so early in their education. And an extra special thank you for Mary Tamari De Palma for making sure that this program continues to be executed. And Mary, for everything else that you do for our students because the things that you do cannot be named. There's too many. Thank you, Mary.
Kim, I am here.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I am here. That's fine. You did a wonderful job.
Well, thank you.
And it's just amazing that I was part of the Kiwanis, or my parents were part of the Kiwanis Club, and so I'd have facets of Safety Town. But when my kids were there, I was like that backup person. You need popsicle sticks, I would run. And Mary knows, like, okay, this is what I'm gonna need. And I provide it because it's such a valuable program, from bus safety to safety with pool or playground safety. It's just a fabulous program and it just made my heart proud that she felt so much about it and continued the program. Kind of brought tears to my mom's eyes with everything that she's going through that Mary still has the heart for Safety Town.
That's great. Is Mary here?
Yeah, I'm right here. I'm drying my tears because Michelle's mom is such a big part of it in the past and such great memories. This has been such a great opportunity to, you know, to shape. I remember being hired in. They were like, well, we've got a sixth grade position open. And I was like, yes, sign me up. I'll take it. But I had always imagined myself being in kindergarten or first grade. So, I really love the opportunity in the summer to work with, you know, the little ones and then, you know, go back to my sixth grade. I like having that balance. And it's just been a real joy and a lot of fun. This year, there were six grade students whose kids are there. So now I'm getting real old. But it really turned out well. It was a great program this summer and I'm hoping that we can get it set up for the next year, too, so I'll keep it running. And I really appreciate it. I appreciate the recognition. I love the T-shirt. I'm pretty excited about that. And thank you, Michelle, for nominating me. I appreciate it.
So.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks for what you do. Board, have any comments? No? Okay.
Thank you all for your service.
Yes. Karen, do you want to say something?
Congratulations, both Billy and Mary.
Karen, do you want to say something? I don't know if you're on mute.
I did, unless we were, like, in a freeze. But congratulations, Mary, and to Billy, both very well deserved on the Cardinal Care.
Real good. Hamden, did I say anything, sir?
I think I might have gotten cut off, but I did.
I saw all that.
Ms. Billy and Ms. Mary, congratulations and thank you for everything.
So, we had a little tip to go there. Mike, did you have any? You there?
I just wanted to say thank, thank you to everybody for the hard work. Billy does a good job with transportation and Mary is an excellent teacher and did a fantastic job with the Safety Town this year. Grabbed it full by the horns and she had very little help to help her this year, not a lot of volunteers. So she really did a great job putting it all together. So, I heard really good things from the firemen and the policemen that it was a real success. So, thank you for everything you guys do.
Real good. Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else, Dr. Sra?
Nope, not at this time, Mr. Berry.
I think you picked out two candidates. The team did. Appreciate it. Okay, at this time, administrative reports. Lisa, you want to go first?
Sure, I'll go first. Hi, everyone. Congratulations, Billy and Mary. And thank you, Board, for approving to hire two new kindergarten teachers. I cannot believe how fast our kindergarten numbers went up. Right now, we're at 228 kindergarten students and 209 first grade students. So a total of 437. So, thank you so much. On the agenda, you also see that we are hiring, or we hired a new Title I aide. We have hired two additional IP aides and we're still looking for a couple more. With the loss of busing, on the first day that we had it, I, we kind of allowed for an hour of drop-off time and an hour of pickup time, like, all staggered. And I think it, well, I hope it, you know, got the parents kind of used to the procedures. And then by the next day, we were able to shorten it to 20 minutes. So we're down to 20 minutes for drop-off and 20 minutes for pickup. I couldn't do this without all my support staff because that's a lot of kids to supervise and, you know, all the kids to get out of the car. So, that's been, it's been a challenge, but it's working. And I'm just making a list of all the parents who, like, can't get their students to school. And I've just been giving that list to Carrie Giuliano for our virtual list. So, that's it.
Very good, Lisa. Board, have any questions, Lisa, at this time? Okay, thank you, Lisa.
Not a question, but it wasn't so long ago, Lisa, that you were wondering about your enrollment and then, like, figured, boom.
I know. I know. And we know that that happened somewhere, but this year, I just, I can't believe it and they're still registering, so.
It could really happen big this year.
Yeah, so thank you very much for hiring two new kindergarten teachers.
Yep. Okay, anyone else?
Lisa, does that keep your class sizes around 24, 25 with the two additional teachers?
With the additional teacher, yes. They'll probably bring them down to about 23 right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay. Shannon?
Hi, everybody. Welcome back to the school year. Congratulations, Billy and Mary. Well deserved on your honors. All right, our school year has been off and running so far. Second grade, I have 212 students. Third grade, 198. Fourth grade, 224. And fifth grade, 195. And that's fluctuating, kids coming in and kids coming out. I think those are pretty solid numbers. We will be dropping any of our students that have moved out of the district within the next couple of days. So, we've got a pile of those and we do have more enrollments coming in right, you know, as we speak, they're enrolling. Our pickup and our drop-off time has definitely gotten into a groove. Our parents are, have been fantastic. We're getting them in and getting them out as quickly as we possibly can. Drop-off in the morning really is quite smooth. Pickup, there's a lot of people coming in. But we've got our time down to about 4:12, the last car pulls out, and that would be when our last bus would have pulled out with kids. So, we're, you know, we're doing well. And I got a shout-out to all the parents, all the maintenance staff, and all my support staff and my teachers that have been helping out. They've made it much easier to do this. And we're in a groove. We're moving, you know, we'll get through this. Our open house will be virtual this year and it's going to be held on Wednesday, September 24th, or I'm sorry, September 22nd, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. And I will make sure that the board has links to that so they can pop in and see classrooms. Our PTO first meeting is going to be this Wednesday, September 15th, at 4:30, and that will be virtual as well. And our first PTO kickoff this year is going to be our color run, which will be held on Monday, September 27th at 5:30. If you've never been to a color run at Allendale, you'd need to show up and watch it. It is so much fun. Kids love it. It's a great time. And our picture day is scheduled for October 14th. And we're getting ready to start testing next week. NWEA kicked off. And our teachers have already started DRA testing and Star is on the way as well.
Shannon, you want to introduce your new hires, your new staff?
Oh, goodness, thank you so much, Jim. And of course, it's on my list, but at the bottom. I'd like to introduce Kayla Goodwin, our new second, our second grade teacher. Kayla's here.
Hi.
She's been a great addition to our second grade team. I have Nancy Bobbush as well, our fourth grade teacher, and she is here as well.
Hi, everyone. Very nice to see you all.
Yep, she's fitting in really nicely in fourth grade as well. And then we have Melanie Prince, who is our technology teacher. And I did not see her originally. I'm not sure if she's on. Melanie, are you on?
I see her.
Nope, she could not be with us. But yep, three fantastic new hires at Allendale. We're really happy to have them. Welcome, Kayla and Nancy. It's wonderful to have you as part of our Cardinal family.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome, welcome.
Welcome, ladies.
Thank you so much.
Welcome to the Cardinal family.
Yes, Lisa, did the kindergarten teacher start yet? Has she got a week, another week? Was it two weeks they had to wait?
Um, wait a minute. We hired Haley McIntosh, enjoy trombly. And then Michelle Blom will be starting, I believe, either Friday or Monday.
Okay. All right, they're not on, though, right?
No, they're not.
Okay, maybe next board meeting we'll get them on. Okay, real good. Thank you, everybody. Phil?
Hello, everybody. Congratulations to Billy and Mary. Obviously, Mary's been in at Strong for quite some time with me. And she does a wonderful job at Strong Middle School, so very well deserved. We had open house last Thursday. We did ours in person. It went well. We begin our NWEA testing on Tuesday, September 21st. Our current enrollment is sitting at 7:26 as of today. Since we've had to cancel busing, we've kept an eye on our attendance since that time. And we're pretty much at 85% every day. So, it's pretty much where it usually is. You know, we obviously like to have it higher, but we're at 85% on average since the busing situation. In regards to COVID, we had two students test positive in our building. Holly did a great job with that. She was over right away, taking care of all the contact tracing if we had to do that. We still have one student that's being quarantined. Then, we want to thank our teachers and our maintenance for our traffic situation at Strong. As you're well aware, that configuration does not bode well for what we're doing right now. But we have a lot of help. Our teachers are volunteering their time out there in the morning and then at dismissal, making sure the kids are crossing. We have 720 kids that have to cross that driveway. So, there's a lot of kids out there. But maintenance has been there helping us. Our teachers have been helping us as well. So, thank you to them. That's all I have.
Any questions for this time?
Is it, is it going a little smoother, Phil, now?
Yeah, the drop-off isn't nearly as bad as the pickup. But today, I think the parents are getting the hang of where to pick up, where to stop, you know, where to go. So today was a lot better than last week. So, yeah, it is getting better.
What about the traffic on Oakwood, getting into the driveway there?
Yeah, there's nothing we can do about that. You know, there's so many cars that are going there at one time. They're backed up, you know, pretty far down Oakwood. But the flow is getting better, so that's out there as long.
That's good. Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Phil. Okay, this time, Ryan, are you there?
Yes, I am. Good evening, everybody. I will go kind of back to, you know, since the last board meeting, I do want to let you know, we had some of our best turnouts at all of our orientations. The student orientations and our freshman parent orientations, we had more people there than we've ever had, which I thought was a really good sign going into this year. And it's led to a really great start to the year. Our numbers seem to be shaking out between 1,010 and 1,020 with adds and drops kind of working within that realm the whole time. The students have been incredibly respectful. I do, I do hope that this appreciation kind of for each other doesn't dwindle as the year goes on. Because right now, the respect is off the charts. And the kids are wonderful to work with. And they, they work with us for sure on, like, these mitigation strategies. So they've been wonderful. I mean, the parents have been really supportive, too. Our new lunches are becoming routine. The kids are starting to get the hang of that. Kind of like Phil said, after you get into some of this stuff, it starts to go much smoother after a few horrible days and pull it off. So, our learning is more organized and now are kind of going smoothly. Kids know where to go. Again, really respectful, really mature, doing what they're supposed to be doing. I think the parents, students, and teachers now are adjusting to our one-way driveway at the high school. We're also, after a few days, getting that figured out. And also, parents are figuring out ways to do it even better by dropping off in different locations, not getting in that line if they can avoid it. Kevin and our maintenance staff, Brendan, Bradley, and Jeffrey are doing an incredible job every drop-off, every pickup of helping us manage traffic. So that, there helps, really appreciate it. And they're doing a good job with the parents. We do have homecoming coming up. So, I kind of talked with Kim about the preliminary plans today. And what we're gonna try to do is everything that we've done in the past, we'll do it all outside. We are gonna have to record our court introduction videos, so those can be, you know, done virtually and then shared electronically. Those are typically done in auditorium. But we will have our Spirit Week festivities during the week. And then we'll have our pep assembly out on the football field using both sides of the stadium so we can space the kids out. And the parade and the game are all October 8th. And then we are looking at dinner dance kind of thing. October 9th, Saturday, I did, I put a deposit down on the North Ford Park Shelter in Dearborn, which is right off Michigan Avenue, kind of right behind their downtown area. It's a huge pavilion, holds about 500 people. It's really, it's really going to be awesome if we pull this off well. But this way, we'll have shelter for weather. That was the main concern. And Kim has supported me on that one. I really appreciate that. And a lot of the kids and parents are getting very excited about these kinds of things. So, we know it's a process. We know we have to kind of do things a little differently, but everything we can provide them in terms of their experience, we're gonna do our best to do that. One awesome thing I want to point out, and definitely kudos to John O'Neil and our football staff, Coach Anderson, Coach Hill, Coach Ford. I know I missed a couple and I apologize. We had our Military Appreciation Night on Friday. The kids wore beautiful red jerseys that had stars on one shoulder and stripes on the other. We honored 12 local veterans in the community during the game. And our, and our kids pulled out a very nice victory, too. So now our football team's two and one. Our soccer team won Saturday. Those kids and coaches have been working really hard since August. So it was nice to see them get some success. But also, on kind of a special Friday, September 10th, we had that really beautiful event honoring some community members. So, I'm really proud of that. And things are going really well. I mean, I'm sure opinions might differ about little details here and there. But overall, I'm really thankful to be back. And I think the kids are, too, and we're rolling.
Anything else, Ryan?
That's all I have for you.
Anybody got any questions?
Oh, you know what, Mr. Berry, I'm sorry. I do, I don't know if she's even here, but I do want to definitely say, give us an official board vote, which is a car. Our new hire, who is in the virtual academy, she has a math and a physics background. She's also got engineering experience a little bit, which we always liked at the high school. So we really got lucky when we posted that position to get someone of her expertise to apply. And so far, so good. She really loves being a part of our district. And she just got rolling, but she's gonna do a great job for us.
The trial we had, we had a board meeting to introduce her. That's one of the ones we interviewed, right?
Yeah, you were involved in that interview. Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, she was very sharp. I remember that, yes. Good.
You want to call on him or do you want me to, Mr. Berry?
Pardon?
Do you want me to call on the hands raised or do you want to?
Yeah, you can.
Matt, we'll start with you.
Ryan, thank you. Just because I've had a few questions, is there gonna be a homecoming parade this year?
Yes.
Is there, is there any limits, criteria based on social distancing because of COVID being outdoors?
Honestly, we have to go work with the city on this. But I think, you know, the key thing, and I always, when Dr. Sra and I are working these things out, you know, what things are voluntary and making sure that if we're having anything like this, it's completely voluntary. So I do feel like, you know, there will be a police presence. And I do think, you know, doing it outside, we can provide a safe environment. But we'll follow any restrictions they have, or the best we can do.
Thank you, Ryan. I just want to bring it up so it's a public forum here, so that way, as many people are watching, listening, we can get the word around.
Absolutely. And I'm gonna be putting together, now that I have the location for the dinner, I'm gonna be putting together like a flyer that we can put everywhere. And we'll get that out to the community so everyone knows what's going on. Karen?
Oh, that was my question. Where is the, are you having a dinner dance? Where is it gonna be?
It's gonna be at the North Shelter of Ford Park, which is a huge park in Dearborn. I mean, I learned about this place today as we were researching pavilions, like covered outdoor pavilions. And so, we found this place, got it through Ford Parks and Rec. And it's, it's like, where the downtown on Michigan Avenue is, it's north, it's like north of that, off of, like, Garrison, if I remember correctly. Yeah, and, and, yeah, they were great to work with, too. They're making an exception for us because we're a high school, because we're doing a homecoming, so.
Good. Nice.
They're a pretty nice deal. Yeah, they've been great to work with.
Oh, that's great. Okay, thanks, Ryan.
You're welcome. Mike?
That was actually part of my question. How scaled are we gonna use on the parade? Is that typical?
Remember, we did away with floats. So we did away with floats a few years ago. So the students do make banners. So I picture it being pretty scaled back. I don't think, I mean, in everything we've done, the participation's been down. So that's the one thing I could see, you know, not being like it's always been. But, you know, we'll see what we can do.
Are you talking, starting at City Hall?
Starting in the Allendale parking lot like we usually do.
Okay. All right, so we're still gonna block the road and all that good stuff?
Yep.
Okay. What date was that?
That is October 8th.
You'll be working, Mike.
Oh, I'm sure.
Well, and Dr. Sra and I had a conversation, too. You know, the fact that it's a lot, a little further out with schools just getting back into the swing of things, we'll be able to keep our eye on case counts and things like that. And this just gives us a little bit of time to make sure it's gonna be the right time to hold our events. But I'm pretty confident that we've got the right ideas here to do this.
And did you say Ford Field? Or, I'm sorry, Ford Park?
It's called Ford Field, but I know that that's gonna, I don't want to ever say that again because that confuses a lot of people. So I think before the Ford Field was built, this was a park in Dearborn. So I think it says Ford Field, but it's a park. And it's called, there's a north and south shelter. It's got a nature trail. It's got a river that goes through there. It's got some baseball and softball diamonds. It's a really.
A bridge.
That's where they usually have their Dearborn home, or Dearborn, I shouldn't call it, the big, big celebration they have around July every year.
Yeah, the homecoming.
Their Dearborn homecoming? Not, not, not for school, but for the city, right?
Right, same, same area.
Oh, that's, that's a huge park. And they canceled it this year, but yeah, they do that every, that year, they do it there every year.
Yep.
So, that's actually a pretty nice venue.
Yeah, if everything goes well, it could be very cool for the kids.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, Ryan, thank you very much. We'll continue on. Caitlin, do you have anything? I think she's there. She was.
Kayton? Oh, Kayton. Yes, sorry. So, food service has been a challenge, as I'm sure many of you are aware of. Oh, Kaiten, yes, sorry. Um, so food service has been a challenge, as I'm sure many of you are aware of and have heard rumblings. But I would like to report that we are steadily getting better and better. Um, we have more students across the board participating in both breakfast and lunch. Um, we're finding some workarounds with product availability and ways to serve hot meals. So we're testing that out um amongst our short staffing issues. Um, again, as I've been saying for the last several board meetings, if you know anybody who would be interested in helping us out um for any number of hours, any day, uh, we're still down about seven people. So having that assistance would make, um, delivering these meals to classrooms and making meals available in the lunchroom um at the secondary level a lot smoother. We have started working with pizza. Fortunately, we have Little Caesar's on board and they're super helpful. Um, and the kids seem to be really enjoying that. We've gotten some hot breaded chicken items, chicken patties or nuggets and wings available as well. I know that a lot of the selection has been very disappointing, and I want to assure all of you that we are doing the best that we possibly can amidst um a supply chain issue that is nationwide. It has been noted amongst our supplier, all other suppliers from what I've heard. Um, and I know that some other schools are seeing different challenges or um having different successes. And we're all trying to put our heads together and come up with the best way to navigate this. So I've been in communication with parents, principals, um, staff, students, everybody about how we're really trying to overcome these issues. And I'm open to any suggestions, any thoughts that you may have. And as always, you can direct any parent questions or student questions, suggestions or complaints my way. Um, I think you all have my email and phone number, so um we're working on it. And thank you all for your patience.
Kate, and I wanted to say thank you for your hard work during this time.
Anybody?
I know it's been a little bump in the road, um, but thank you for getting the the uh s- the school lunch schedule out um like for a couple of weeks out in advance so parents would know it's for lunch, um, and providing some hot meals. So thank you.
Real good. Anyone, anyone else?
Yeah, I I um Caitlin, Kaiten, thank you for sending that very detailed email out explaining everything that's going on with the lunches. Um, is it, what has, what's been the biggest challenge? Is it the shortage of staff?
Um, honestly, it's hard to choose what is the biggest or most significant challenge at this time. Uh, staffing is definitely not helping. That is a big concern of ours. Um, but if we even could get the food that we want to be serving to begin with, that would be an enormous help. But unfortunately, that shortage is um kind of above and beyond anything that we can handle internally. So um as that sorts itself out, and I'm actually currently working on our order for the rest of this week right now. And everything is out of stock again. It's a constant nightmare, so it just keeps cycling through. And that's probably the biggest issue, but then having that additional staff, um, once we hopefully get to hire more folks um will help to get out the food that we can access and prepare.
So is it the shortage of um the food supply that has brought us to the packaged lunches?
Um, that was.
Wondering how we got to that place.
Oh, sure. So um the packaged lunches was sort of um an eleventh hour decision for COVID guidelines and trying to follow appropriate procedures to keep everybody safe. Um, some of the foods that we've served in the past, you know, I've seen previous menus. I worked with Marty as an intern in two thousand eighteen. And I've seen the kind of foods that we used to serve, and it's a very robust menu and something that I hope to get back to. Um, but at this time, transporting those foods back to classrooms where some of our students are eating. Um, half, half of all students at the secondary level and all of our students at the elementary level are eating in their classrooms um per COVID guidelines, uh, to keep the kiddos safe, especially those that can't get vaccinated. So transporting certain hot items is a new challenge that we're trying to work around. Trying to find a way to get at least some tacos back, but that will include product availability and then packaging options. And honestly, even the messes that are going to be occurring in the classrooms. And we want to um obviously be walking that middle ground of satisfaction for student meals while also not causing a literal disaster for every other department. And then on top of that, I'm sorry, I'll just, I'll finish up. Um, so the, a lot of the packaged items came about from that decision to um safeguard further student interactions and uh keeping everybody consolidated and not mingling and not sharing a lot of germs in common areas while transporting food. Um, and then those items have limited availability as well. So it's all sort of like a Venn diagram of what's safe and what is available and what is, um, you know, fitting the requirements that we need for the USDA. So all these things are coming together in a Venn diagram that creates a very, very small inner space that we can work with, but we're trying to expand that in as many ways as we can. We're being as creative as possible.
Well, the reason I ask is because of um some of our neighboring districts that are still doing their lunches pretty much normal. And I don't know if it's a district-by-district decision um how lunches are handled, but I know that they're doing, you know, regular hot lunch serving in other school districts. And I wondered why we stepped away from that.
Karen, they're also sitting on top of each other. They're sitting right next to each other. They're not, they don't have the spacing. They don't have the three feet spacing.
Who, us?
No, the other districts.
They're not following the.
They're not following the guidelines. They're not spacing by three feet. They're sitting right next to each other.
Oh.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, Kate. Absolutely. So that's just, I know that it is um district by district. And the directives that I received as well as considerations that we're trying to make that fit all of the protocols that are brought about by um decision makers within our district and Holly's lovely um precautions that she has educated all of us on. That's just sort of the best direction that we could begin moving in. And I know that it was definitely a culture shock to have all the cold meals and the packaged meals to begin with um to start out the school year, and I'm sure that that was um a negative compared to a lot of other school districts, so that I can understand. But we are safely expanding and finding, once again, those creative ways to serve more hot meals, more enjoyable meals and the kinds of foods that kids have seen in our district before. So it's growing. It's not shrinking from here.
So it's been a perfect storm of shortage of staff, COVID um caution, and a shortage of the supply.
Those are the three big ones, yeah, but lots of other smaller influences.
Yeah, just so the public understands.
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Real good, Caitlin. Good job. Thank you. Uh, at this time, Alfie, Jim? Yes.
Derek?
Go ahead.
I got a question. Is it a state guideline that it has to be three feet apart? Is it a?
Um, so that is actually a guideline that's on multiple levels of our public health precautions. That's from the CDC. It's also from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Service, and it's a county basis too, I believe. But nationally speaking, those are required guidelines, and I'm not really sure how other schools are getting around this. But we want to make sure that our kids are as safe as they can possibly be, especially those who are younger than twelve and can't be vaccinated. Mike, another, Mike?
Everybody understands that's not something that we did ourselves, that we're just following protocol from the CDC and this county that's that's telling us this is what it's supposed to be. Other schools not be doing it the way they're supposed to be.
Yes, exactly. And I think that Holly may have um some more enlightenment on that subject as well.
Yeah, we'll get to Holly. Everybody all set? Thanks, Caitlin.
If I could, I'm sorry, um, I just. I I just want to say thank you um for ramping up the communication and and trying to be um open and and talking to the parents. Um, I've seen improvement already, and I just, I know that's a difficult thing to bear. So thank you for addressing it and continuing to look for solutions. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate you and all of you, really, your understanding and your patience with me as we just try to do what's right across the board. Um, we'll get there, I promise. Um, and I'm sorry if you're all hearing negative commentary. Uh, I am as well, and it hurts my heart because this is not how we want to be serving lunches. This is not what we want to be serving, but like you said, Karen, it's a perfect forum. So thank you all again for your patience very, very much, and please don't hesitate to reach out if there's anything I can do or help with. Thanks, Kate. And Holly.
Well, let's go to Alfie, then I'll go to Holly.
All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome back. Um, I thought the pandemic was challenging. The first week of school was nothing compared to that. Uh, in my twenty-eight years, I've never seen anything like this. Um, I am saddened that I had to cancel busing for the District of Melvindale. I never thought this was going to happen. But um it was out of my control, and we had several safety nets in place to make sure that didn't happen. And I did Plan A, Plan B, Plan C, they all fell apart. Uh, Plan A was, um, I had some drivers that went into maintenance, which we then replaced. Um, I had a bus driver two weeks before school started that retired, that left. I replaced him right away with Robin Webster, so I was still good to go. And uh over the summer, we negotiated um with two different vendors to make sure that we can start the school out correctly. Um, we had a contract in place with vendor number one that assured us that they will be able to take over our special education runs, part of them. And vendor number two was supposed to pick up the rest of them. As we're negotiating, getting contracts in place, signed a contract with them, um, we started the first day of school. Two days before school started, I had three bus drivers retire because they did not want to take on the challenges of driving school buses during the pandemic, because on the school bus, unfortunately, you can separate and do three feet apart. Our buses are crowded. We have anywhere from fifty to sixty students on the bus. They are required to wear masks. But again, um, it is very challenging to keep them three feet apart, so we do everything in our power to make sure the kids are safe. Unfortunately, they got a drag with the bus windows open and have their masks on, and we had aides that we had hired to plan to help with that procedure. Uh, four days into the school year, vendor A canceled their contract due to a shortage of bus drivers in their own facility. Uh, several of them quit and several of them had COVID and they were not going to return back. So Plan B was the third vendor, and they never got off the ground because all of their drivers decided not to return to. Driving a school bus is very, very challenging. And it is um a process that takes about three months to become a bus driver because you just don't go to the Secretary of State and get a CDL and say, hey, I can drive a school bus. You have to get three different endorsements. Um, probably takes about three weeks till you pass if you study faithfully every night. When you do have that learner's permit, you will then come to Melvindale and we will train you. We have a trainer on staff. You're required to have anywhere from forty to fifty driving hours behind the bus, and you have to have skills driving also, which takes about a process of about three months. You can then see a state inspector, a state tester, that will take you on a road test and you get tested. When you completed that, there's a mandatory three-and-a-half-day training at Wayne County Risa to be certified bus driver. So as of this point now, Melvindale has approximately ten special ed runs, which are required by law to fulfill. So we can continue getting federal funding from the state and the feds. Um, we have currently two buses going to wind up, One to Lincoln Park, South Gate, Trenton, Garden City, Two to Taylor and One to Flint, Michigan for the school for the DOW. So we are transporting them. Um, when I, when the district had to cancel transportation for the entire district, it was devastating to everyone else and myself because I was shocked that we had to do that. But I'm working on nonstop over the weekend with Dr. Serrano and a couple of my staff members. I contacted any travel agency that charters tour buses just to see if they could come in and help us out to do universal staffs, like one at the Ice Arena, uh, one or two by Palmer School, two in Allen Park, one in the Princeton Estates. And all the travel companies that I contacted already have year-long contracts with universities. U of M, Michigan, the Spartans, Eastern, Western, they take their travel teams um to football games, basketball games, all kinds of events, and they have them year-long. But they also are short of drivers. Two of them had to cancel their contracts with a couple of the colleges because they could not complete those. So unfortunately, everybody's in the same boat. I contacted Wayne County Risa to see if they have any beginner bus driver classes where there are self-employed drivers that we could hire to start working with us, but their classes have been empty. Nobody's attending. So um, um, the good news, I hired two new drivers. Um, they're on this board agenda, Mr. Otis Fleming and Mr. Charles Bass. They will be starting with us. I interviewed two today, bus drivers that have their CDLs. Um, they will give me an answer tomorrow. I have two more interviews scheduled for Wednesday. And hopefully, um, we can bring them to Melvindale. And thankfully, the Board of Ed decided to raise the rates for bus drivers. That was the key that got me those drivers to come in the door because of the pay increase that set us above everyone else right now. So um, some of those drivers are from neighboring districts, sorry to say, but oh, well, Melvindale needs them. So I'm I'm hoping that within the next several weeks, uh, by the time they get their driving time in, uh, three of them already are all done. The ones that I tested and interviewed today, one of them is ready to go. Uh, one has a CDL, but she hasn't been driving in two and a half years, so we're going to make sure she gets some road time in. So I'm hoping that within the next several weeks, we should be up and running. I'm constantly looking, uh, we're out. I word of mouth, we have signs out, we're on Wayne County Risa. Um, if anybody that's listening tonight, please, if you have a CDL or know of somebody, don't hesitate to call us. Um, we also have an extended lease for Ford Motor Company today. I dropped that check off at Central Office for an additional twenty-one thousand dollars for renting Baker, which brings our total income to forty-four thousand dollars. We had meetings with Brian Smillneck, myself, Dr. Serrano, uh, Mr. O'Neal, Ryan and Mr. Castle regarding the layout and the plans for the dome at Baker, the proposed site plan, uh, the location and the layout of the gym and locker rooms. And we had a discussion on the floor plan for the preschool at Baker that Dr. Serrano was in on and gave her um opinion, how we should go, how many classrooms we're going to have. I also spoke with the Police Chief Jones. He hired a new crossing guard today. And she will be stationed on Oakwood and Allen, right by that McDonald's for early in the morning for high school, junior high, and even Allendale students. She's a forty-year resident and wants to supplement her income, and we're looking forward to working with her. Uh, that's all I got. Thank you. Any questions for?
Real good, Alfie. Thank you. Anybody got any questions?
Yeah, that's all, that's all you got, Alfie? That's a lot. That's another perfect storm.
Correct.
But I think um one of the best things that you did is to provide the um, you know, some of your workers to help with that horrible traffic situation at the middle school and at Allendale, because that's just so dangerous. Kids at that age don't think anything bad is ever going to happen to them, and they're they're not being careful about crossing the driveway there, and they aren't in any situation. It's not just without the buses. It's always. It's not just without the buses. It's always a scary day.
Melvindale is very fortunate to have employees like Billy Lamb that are longtime employees, go above and beyond and do things that some people probably think it's silly or wouldn't do. Billy's dedicated, hardworking, loyal, always volunteers for anything you ask her. I call her and say, hey Billy, I really need a favor at this. Absolutely. When, where and what time? That's the most majority of our employees that work for Melvindale from Allendale to Strong to the high school. They come in, they pitch in. Otherwise, I wouldn't be able to do my job and the school district wouldn't be able to function if it wouldn't be for them. They come in the mornings. I've been at Allendale every morning, waving at everyone, driving by. And it really got better within this last week. I think people are adjusting to the traffic flow. I think kids pay more attention. It's much easier at the high school and I'm pretty sure we're gonna get strong where we want them to be. Mr. Fish had a good idea. He had different pickup locations for eight weeks. He's using the church parking lot. The sixth graders come out of the main doors and the seventh graders are going over to the parking lot by the pool area. So, it kinda helps separate the traffic a little bit. And Lisa has always been self-functioning over there at Rogers. You've got an amazing staff over there. But as always, if you need anything from my department or anything else, please call me, let me know. And if there's anything anybody needs, wants, please.
Well, good luck with all of the new drivers. They all have their, all of the ones that you're interviewing and hiring already have their CDL?
Yep. The two of them that I hired, they have their CDL. One that I interviewed this morning has a CDL. He's currently driving. He's gonna give me an answer tomorrow. I interviewed a lady. She has all the credentials that she got before the pandemic started. She got it two weeks before and then everything shut down and she had no place to go. So, I'm gonna put her in a bus, give her some draining time with our trainer. The only thing I need to do is, she even has the green card for Wayne County Risa. She kept it up herself. So, that's another one. And then I'm interviewing two more on Wednesday. One has a license, one we need to train. So, I'm hoping with word of mouth that other districts and other drivers will be coming because Patty has a couple messages. We returned them, but we haven't been able to get ahold of them. So.
Great. I'm glad that you at least had someone come in.
Yes. That happened with the help of the Board raising that driver's wage. Most people look for full-time jobs. It's hard to find somebody that wants to come for five hours, five and a half hours. So, since we raised it to seven and raised the rate of pay, we're leading the pack right now.
Good. Thanks Elfi.
You're welcome. Thank you. Mike, I see you have a question for me, Mr. Kilmorgan?
Not, not most of, a question per se, but more like a kudos. I know it was not easy. I see it out there every morning. And some of these people don't know how to drive. I actually saw a lady park across the Tim Hortons driveway, half in the first lane, half in the driveway, waving her kid across the street as cars are going by. And I was just shocked and I actually yelled out the window, you can't park there. But with everything going on, you know, having our maintenance guys out there, I even seen John and Mike out there helping direct traffic and stuff, so.
Anybody that I can recruit to make life easier for parents, children, teachers or anybody else, we will be here to serve. Because we try to make it as simple as possible for everyone. So, we're back up and running again.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you. I can't do it by myself. It's my staff.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Elfi, I just wanna say thank you. I know this definitely wasn't ideal, but I think you're doing great and trying to work out of it. I love, well, it's, I don't wanna say that I love that, you know, we possibly have interest from other districts because I know the impact it can have from other students. But I think anything we can do to help our students, but it's a step in the right direction. And just honestly, appreciate everything that you and your team are doing, even in the morning pickups and drop-offs. They are getting smoother, so I appreciate that.
Yeah. Well, like I said, we're working on it. The weather's getting colder, changes. We wanna make sure we can get buses back on the road ASAP. So, hopefully, we can manage to do that in the next several weeks or maybe a month, but that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, Elfi, you're doing a good job. I've been going around, so you're doing a good, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Perry.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, we'll continue on. Jackie, you got anything?
Just real, I just wanna give you the updated counts for our bilingual students. We have 217 new ones, new students that we have welcomed into our district. We know that Rogers always gets the, you know, they have 123 because they have their kindergarten students that, you know, they, we also have to make sure they're screened. We have 42 at Allendale, 21 Strong and 25 at Melvindale High School. So, the WIDA screener is, you know, being used right now to make sure we place them in the, in the correct play, you know, classes and what supports they need. But everybody is doing a fabulous job. The EL coaches, as always, are fabulous, getting them all done and placed where they belong. I wanted to just congratulate Billy and Mary and welcome all the new staff that we have. It's wonderful and I can't wait to meet all of you. So, thank you. Everybody is still not up and running, but we are doing our best. I know Karen, I'm watching your face. So, we're still, I have everything, we're pre-approved for everything for August, September and October that were new things in the grants. But so far, so good. Thank God. Thank you, everybody.
All right, we'll go on to. How are you there? You were?
Hi, I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
You're up, you're up.
All right. Hey, congratulations Billy and Mary. Billy and I have had a few conversations this school year. You guys are both amazing. So, welcome everybody to the 21-22 school year. It's been pretty exciting beyond words to see all the kids in school. I was just so excited, you know, last year was my first year with the district and I saw a handful of kids. But it was mainly the grownups. It was mainly the staff that, that, you know, we were trying to keep safe and fielding all the questions. And then this year, we have the children back. So, it's, it's really incredible. The Health Department wasn't doing us any favors from a county perspective with not mandating masks until the eighth hour. So, Administration and Dr. Serrano and I, we worked diligently to put the COVID protocols together following the CDC as well as the Health Department. That was before there were mandations. But we're staying focused on science and safety. Those, those are the two biggies. Certainly, we are aware of what other districts are doing. I have, I have colleagues and friends in other districts and so we throw things off each other. But ultimately, we Cardinal Nation are science and safety for our babies. So, masking, as we know, it's a mandation. That took some of the pressure off the district, although would have liked to have seen it done before the, you know, literally a few days before school. But I've been beyond impressed with our kids. I'm going down the hallways, I'm in classrooms and the kids are just, they're just troopers. You know, the thought that, you know, how are the kids gonna keep their masks on? And I'm sure everyone has seen some of the volatility on the news with, with parents being upset. These kids are like, hey, it's the rule and, and they clearly wanna be in school. So, I've just, even the little people, I've been so impressed with the masks. And certainly, we're there as the teachers and all the support staff to just remind them when they slip up a little. But overall, they've been, they've been amazing. Again, administrators getting creative, you know, along with Kat and as far as lunches and, and there's, there's certain times, certain situations where, you know, that three feet and masking or a divider wasn't going to be possible. And so, when we were talking about protocols, it was all about getting creative. And everybody's jumped in and done that. And I'll, I'll tell you, that part, why it is so incredibly important is because when I get a phone call that a parent called and said, you know, that their child or, or the parent or the teacher has COVID or when I get a phone call to come over to the school because a child's not feeling good. And by the way, any parents that are listening, I'm there. I'm present to answer questions, to educate, but also to test your child. We want to be as proactive as possible. The sooner we find out, the child is safer for the family, for the school, for everyone. So, the teachers, the principals have been great. If they've got a sick kid, they'll call me. We reach out to the parents and most parents have said yes. Holly, come and, come and test my child. Obviously, sick children, you know, still need to go home, but we've, we've caught it. We've, we've caught it early on. We have, of the, of the children that we've tested, there has been a couple positive. But where the three feet, the dividers and the masks came into play was I was able to tell a teacher, I was able to tell a parent that you're not at risk. And that is what is so incredibly important to keep not only our staff and students safe, but to keep our doors open. So, you know, thank you for everyone that is consistently, you know, remaining creative. Our parents' support for, you know, allowing me to, to go in and, and, you know, swab your kid. But it's, it's been, it's been a deal changer and those are, those are the things that we, we have in place that is avoiding the spread. And, and we know that, that COVID spreads, you know, pretty darn easily. There's some talk about screening. I was able to obtain some more COVID tests that are no cost to the district. So, when those things come across my desk, I jump on it and try to get as many resources I can that aren't gonna be a cost. Cleaning, disinfecting, Elfi's team is the bomb. Sick kid, whether they're just sick or they have COVID, when I've been at the school, they've been right there. We've communicated. And we've, we've made sure that everything was clean and they're, they're amazingly helpful. Ask a lot of questions and, and just overall keeping the kids safe. The only other thing I have is vaccine clinics. So, I'm working on vaccine clinics, general vaccines. So, like for the children, I'm trying to minimize the parents needing to go to the Health Department because there's some general vaccines that the kids need in order to remain in school. So, I'm working with our staff and they're gonna be reaching out to the parents and we're gonna be inviting. And I've already confirmed, the Health Department's gonna come into the buildings and help us out. So, we can make sure that our children not only have their general vaccines, but those that are eligible, the COVID vaccine will also be available. And then I'm setting up another vaccine clinic for flu vaccines, COVID boosters, that kind of thing for the staff. So, those two vaccine clinics are in the works. I don't have any confirmation of dates. But the most of the staff, we've got about another month or so because the booster is at about the eight-month period and that's after your second vaccine. So, they, they won't be eligible for a little while, but I'm trying to secure dates now so everybody can plan ahead. And that's all I got.
Thank you. Anybody have questions this time?
Yeah, Holly, do you recommend that the students change their masks on a daily basis or is that like not a, not a huge issue?
Honestly, we, so we have opposibles in the school and, you know, a lot of, a lot of kids, you know, a lot of kids will bring them in. But if, if you think about the theory of COVID, you know, it's, it's, you know, we're breathing into the inside of the mask, right? So, it's, it's more, it's more the droplet that's the concern when, and, you know, kids sneeze and cough and they're not, they're not real careful. So, that part of it isn't a concern. You know, they can wear their, their mask. The outside of it is dirty with more like whatever funk is on their hands, which is why we promote handwashing. But it, it doesn't, it doesn't heighten the spread at all. And the protocols that we're taking, the kids are, the kids are really staying safe. So, we know that the, we know COVID is gonna get in our buildings. We just wanna make sure that we minimize the spread.
Okay, real good. Thank you. I think I'm having a little, little bit of internet problems, so if I drop out, you'll have to take over. Are you there? No?
No worries Jim, we'll take over.
Austin just texted me. I guess I'm going in and out, I guess. Austin, you're up. Can you hear me?
Absolutely. Hello, everyone. I'd love to say that this is a typical start to the school, but as we all know, it's not. We are knocking out problems as quickly as we can and getting devices deployed as quickly as we can. Besides the normal stuff that we have going on, we've got a lot of large projects. We've got tabling going on in three buildings. We've got a wireless controller going in across that will serve all the buildings in the district. We've got switches that have been on a six-month back order that should start coming in sometime in the next four weeks. We've got a total of 519 devices coming in for high school. 270 of them were delivered last week. We've just got a lot of, a lot of things going on.
Okay, anybody questions? Can you hear me? Am I still on?
Wait, Austin, before you distribute those, I wanna talk to you tomorrow morning about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can anybody hear me all right?
Yeah, we can hear you Jim.
We can hear you.
Okay.
Hey, Austin, how's your club doing? The gaming? So, we've started back all the titles. I think we're gonna have a really good year. We're, we're struggling to get some things working here at the school. We changed content filters, so the games aren't working. We can't meet face-to-face yet, which will improve our program significantly. Having the kids online the entire time has been difficult. We've plugged through and we've made a lot of growth. Hopefully, we'll have more than one state title this year. That's our goal. Thank you, Austin.
Okay, I'm leaving the best for last. Barb, our new fighter?
Hello, everybody.
Director, you're up.
I'm very, very happy and excited to join the Cardinal Nest and be a part of the team. It's my first week. I started last Tuesday. Very happy to, to be onsite and meeting everyone. What a welcoming group of people. I feel truly blessed to be a part of this. As I'm learning and observing how things operate, if there's anything that I can do or that you would like from me from a reporting perspective, please feel free to reach out. For those who do not know, I am pretty significantly hearing impaired. And so, email is the best way to communicate with me. It's very difficult for me to hear over the phone. It sounds like Charlie Brown's teacher. But I'm very excited to have such a robust team of administrators and board members and business office associates. And I am very sure that we will be able to overcome all of these. all of these, um, pitfalls that not only Melvindale, Northern Allen Park, but all school districts across the country are facing. Um, we, I'm working with Jackie to get our grants done as quickly and efficiently as possible. The state of Michigan, in their infinite wisdom, has implemented a new program, a new platform for doing grants, um, which they've been promising us would be up and running since last April. And hopefully it will be up and running before October. So we're all doing the best we can given the, um, the challenges that we're facing. And I, I'm just so proud to be here and grateful for the opportunity. Um, and I just would really sincerely like to say thank you to everyone for the, for the very warm welcome.
Welcome Barb. Boy, that sounds familiar Jackie. New program? You'll be here yesterday?
Yes.
She said it's six months and still waiting. Oh my gosh. Good luck ladies.
Thank you. We need it.
We do indeed.
Does anyone have any more questions for Barb? All right. Am I back now?
Thank you. You're back.
All right. Uh, congratulations. Board gets a chance. They should drop by, say hi to you when they get a chance. Appreciate it. Thank you. Uh, I think that's everybody. Dr. Serrano, you're up.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I've been meeting with everyone the last couple of weeks and sometimes more than once a day, but we're getting things ironed out and we're moving right along. Uh, I always used to tell my teachers, in education, you have to be like Jello. You have to watch it wiggle, watch it jiggle because you never know what's going to change. And you gotta wiggle and jiggle with it. And we've been doing that. This is, this last two weeks have been a real challenge, but we're getting there. As long as our kids are okay, that's the main thing. So, uh, we're approaching NWA testing in all the buildings. That's our next goal. Like Jackie said, the Weta placement has been going on right since the beginning. Um, our coaches are in full swing, meeting with teachers and meeting with kids and doing everything that they need to do. Uh, I had meetings this week with, uh, uh, a couple of principals and I have a ad staff meeting coming up. Um, we're in meetings all the time, trying to work things out, get a plan for things that I have not, you know, as you know, have not been going exactly right. So I had a meeting with Tabita Colbert, the superintendent of Wayne County Risa Schools. Last week she came to visit. We had lunch together and that was before, uh, the busin situation happened. And I've been texting her and our state representative all right along, trying to see if they can help us in any way. So, uh, she said she got her CDL. I told her I would get mine, but three months is a long time to wait to get my CDL. So, uh, yeah, she said she got hers years ago. Um, anyways, I think it would be wonderful because I could drive a magic school bus, just like in the books. Uh, so anyways, that's about all that's going on right now. Um, I, uh, I have, I honestly can say that I have a great administrative staff. My buildings are running great. And, uh, they're adhering, the kids are adhering to all the protocols and the teachers are doing a phenomenal job. I'm so proud of all of them. Uh, we've been able to find, uh, nice, uh, great teachers, uh, for the jobs that have been vacated. We lost a first grade teacher because, uh, her child, uh, needed to go to preschool and she got hired at the school that was a quarter mile away from her house where her son went to preschool and she doesn't have family here to babysit. So that's why we had to hire another first grade teacher. But otherwise, all of our positions are filled and we fill them with great people. I'm excited to have them on board. So welcome, everyone that's new. Welcome Barb. I'm excited to work with you. I, uh, think we're going to be a great team. Does anybody have any questions?
Okay.
If you become a bus driver and get your CDL, I will have to say that you've done almost every job I personally seen in this district. I want to beat it the day you're driving. I want to take a picture of that.
You don't want to watch me back up on here.
I've only seen you in sports cars.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll continue on. Uh, Matt, do we have any, uh, public forum?
Yes, we do Jim. We have two of them. Uh, the first one, they would like their comment read today. It comes from Nazr Eldahani. Um, and the question is, I have a kid in Rogers School and I'm not able to take him to school. I asked the school office if I could register him on, online and they said no. And if he not showed up, um, he will get removed from school this year. So what can we do with this problem? Thank you.
Lisa, are you aware of that?
That's at Rogers. So.
Yeah, some, every, every parent that's come in that's asked that, I've given the name to Carrie Bulyano for virtual and also given them the number to Latchkey. If they're, if they live in close proximity to Allendale, then they could potentially walk there and then have them bust to Rogers if they pay the fee for Latchkey. But yeah, every, you know, I mean, I know virtual isn't an option right now because there's a waitlist, but that's, you know, that's the only option right now.
Lisa, will you check to see if Perry called that family?
Yeah, I can.
Okay. And then get back to me and let me know. Thank you.
Okay, real good. Matt?
Second one. Um, sorry, uh, I'm probably going to butcher the first name here. Abdul Mahid Sayad, um, also liked the comment read, um, I am a parent of a student at Melvindale High School. I have, I have work and can't take my kids to school every day, nor does, um, we have someone to take him. I pay my taxes. The water bill is increasing. So what is the city doing? Bad weather is coming. It will start snowing soon. My slash our kids will be in the, in the cold walking with no buses.
Matt, did you say it was the high school?
That one was, yes, the high school.
Well, there, there is, there are still openings for virtual high school. I know that. Correct Ryan?
Yes, yes, there is. I, I think that's more of a transportation, you know, his question. Maybe if, if we have any type of timeline, it almost sounds like, but I understand that looking towards the cold weather will, it's going to make this a little more difficult.
I don't think we're going to make it to cold weather though, right Alfie?
I'm working on it. I am not going to guarantee, like I said, I, I, I'm interviewing them now because if I say this is going to be done in two to three weeks, people are going to hold me to it.
Yeah, I, I wasn't looking for that Alfie. I didn't mean, I didn't mean to put that on you to come up with a date, but I think together, yeah, we can definitely offer him that if that's the, if that's what he decides. Um, but I'll need the name and if you can make sure I get the proper information, we can reach out to the family. We'll work it out.
At least it's an option Ryan.
Definitely.
Okay. Any, any other man? Can you hear me?
Matt, you're muted.
No, that's all Jim.
All right. Thank you. All right. We'll go on to consent agenda. Do I have a motion, consent agenda? I need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Amber, do I have a support?
Karen.
Karen? Okay. Any discussion on the consent agenda?
I just had a quick question on that because I know there's a few, uh, a few teachers that, that resigned or quit or, and, but I didn't see any, uh, exit interviews. Did we have any exit interviews for any, from any of them?
They were all sent, uh, exit interviews. It's whether or not they turn them in. So I know that Jill included anybody who's, who's turned in to date.
Yeah, there wasn't one with any, with any of these. So I, is it for, like for each week we, or for each, um, meeting we have, uh, the exit interviews will be sent out for that meeting, correct? So for like.
Immediately when they resign, we send the exit interview. So when, um, when we get them, after they resign, whether they send it in two weeks, three weeks, we always include it wherever we, whenever we get it.
It's with the Friday night mailings. Whatever we get, we've sent out with the Friday night mailings, but some people, they don't turn them in. So when we get them, we send them to the board on the Friday night mailings.
Kelly receives them all and if we get them, we send them to you. We do not keep any exit interviews passed.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure because I didn't see any for this, for this meeting, but thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have one. Are the kitchen jobs posted somewhere? Can you hear me?
I believe so. Um, Kelly Stinger is our personnel secretary and she's been handling a lot of that. Um, so she has those posted, um, through her avenues and then we also promote it at every possible turn, uh, be that via social media or the chair that we conducted.
Yeah.
Karen, they're posted on Indeed and they're posted on the, uh, website for Risa as well.
Correct. And I also had signs made. They should be coming out either tomorrow on Wednesday that Melvindale is looking for bus drivers, maintenance and kitchen employees. And that will be posted at Baker and all the schools and a couple of them throughout the district. So yes.
Oh, okay. Awesome. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Well, I was going to ask, have we thought about even going old school and putting flyers in with the children? Um, just so they can take home to their family members, um, that we are hiring. I, I know it's, it's old school, but, um, maybe people aren't reading signs or social media and maybe they can hand a flyer off to a family member that might be interested.
It's a good idea. Alfie? Alfie, can we just, uh, can we just copy that sign that you have?
Well, I think it should come on a letterhead that we need to write out and.
No, we will, but just give me the wording you have on the sign, what, what you're hiring for hour. Do you have hourly on there?
I have on there, uh, Melvindale bus drivers, $22 an hour, also looking for maintenance and kitchen because the hours vary for the kitchen. So I didn't like how many hours that are on there. But if we can send it out, we can also put on there that we're looking for, uh, traffic control at the schools. We can put that on there too and print them out and put them into the kids' backpacks. Yeah.
All right. Sounds good. Jill, let's do that and get it to Kelly tomorrow.
Okay, got it. If Alfie sends it to me, I'll, I'll get that to Kelly.
Well, she doesn't really have to send you anything. She just gives $22 an hour for bus drivers. We just have to put the other jobs we're looking for.
Okay, that's the only ones on hers. She, I thought she said she had maintenance and kitchen too.
Right. I can just send you thing that on that side that we have. It's just.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Kate, you're going to need to get with Jill and tell her what you need, okay?
Absolutely. I can handle that tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Teamwork is the dream work.
Okay, roll call vote, Matt.
Karen Lang?
Yes.
Hamden Herrera?
Yes.
Jim Berry?
Yes.
Matthew Rader? Yes. Alex Antoski?
Yes.
Amber Cochrane?
Yes.
Mike Cole Morgan?
Yes.
Passes Jim.
All right. Thank you. Any communications, Matt?
No, sir.
Okay. No old business? No business. A, approve Melvindale High School purchase of STEM scopes, SI, exhilarated learning science, Chem, CAD, teaching supplies, one year, not to exceed $31,750.25. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Okay.
Support? I'll support.
Mike supported it? Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none? Roll call.
Karen Lang?
Yes.
Hamden Herrera?
Yes.
Jim Berry?
Yes.
Matthew Rader? Yes. Alex Antoski?
Yes.
Amber Cochrane?
Yes.
Mike Cole Morgan?
Yes.
It passes Jim.
Okay. Uh, I guess we go to me, right?
Right.
Approved Melvindale High School purchase of BBC STEM scopes, streaming student K-12 online, one year, not to exceed $682.50. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll motion.
Motion by Hamden. Do I have a support?
Support Karen.
Karen, okay. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, roll call.
Karen Lang?
Yes.
Hamden Herrera?
Yes.
Jim Berry?
Yes.
Matthew Rader? Yes. Alex Antoski?
Yes.
Amber Cochrane?
Yes.
Mike Cole Morgan?
Yes.
It passes Jim.
Thank you. C, approve Melvindale High School purchase of math, MPS, statistics, online learning license, six years, not to see $9,126.20. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion, Amber.
Amber, do I have a support?
Support.
Matt, any discussions on that? Hearing none? Roll call.
Karen Lang?
Yes.
Hamden Herrera?
Yes.
Jim Berry?
Yes.
Matthew Rader? Yes. Alex Antoski?
Yes.
Amber Cochrane?
Yes.
Mike Cole Morgan?
Yes.
Passes Jim.
Thank you. D, approved Strong Middle School purchase of BBC STEM scopes, streaming student K-12 online, two years, not to see $2,925. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mike. Do I have a support?
Support.
Uh, Hamden?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, roll call.
Karen Lang?
Yes.
Hamden Herrera?
Yes.
Jim Berry?
Yes.
Matthew Rader? Yes. Alex Antoski?
Yes.
Amber Cochrane?
Yes.
Mike Cole Morgan?
Yes.
It passes Jim.
Thank you. E, approve Melvindale High School CTE program, purchase of $25 computers, a three-year onsite warranty through Presidio, 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 not to see $30,300 will be paid for with added cost funding received from the state. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
Motion.
Motion by Hamden, supported by Alex. Any discussion? Hearing none?
Karen Lang?
Yes.
Hamden Herrera?
Yes.
Jim Berry?
Yes.
Matthew Rader? Yes. Alex Antoski?
Yes.
Amber Cochrane?
Yes.
Mike Cole Morgan?
Yes.
It passes Jim.
Hey, thank you, board. Okay. Any other business? Dr. Serrano, any other business?
I don't.
No Jim.
Board discussion. Okay, I guess we start off. Hamden, you want to start off tonight, sir?
Sure. Uh, well, first and foremost, congratulations to, uh, Ms. Billy Lamb and, uh, Mary DePalma. I don't, I'm sorry if I butchered that for their Cardinal Care honors. Uh, and then welcome to all of our new staff. We're, uh, happy to have you as part of our Cardinal family and, um, looking forward to working with everybody here. And thank you everybody for, for attending today.
Thank you. Uh, Karen Lang?
Um, yes, congratulations to Billy and Mary. And also, um, thank you to Kate and Alfie and all of the staff that's helping out to make this, um, trying time as safe as we can possibly make it. And I'm hoping and crossing my [inaudible 0:01:39] that we get those new drivers on the road.
Okay, real good. Thank you. Um, Amber?
Yes, um, I just want to thank everyone for, um, doing the, the best we can in order to get these kids in school and provide them with the. Doing the best we can in order to get these kids in school and provide them with the education that they need. I know, you know, we've been virtual for over a year now. So, you know, it was typical that we were going to have some bumps and bruises on our first couple of weeks. And I think we are learning as we go and building character and getting better. So I just ask for patience from our community and understand that we're trying to do the best we can and we know that we want to be better. And then really just want to thank the staff and administrators and everyone. Just for giving it two hundred percent every day to help our district. So thank you.
Real good. Michael, Mike?
Yep, first I ask you a question. Do we have a plan of where everybody's going once we do open Baker? What's the idea here?
I'm sorry, Mike. I didn't hear you. What was that?
When we decide to open Baker, who's all going where?
Yeah.
The high school, the only the only school that's moving to Baker, Mike.
That's all we're going to do is the kids at the high school are going to go to Baker.
Right, and then we're going to have a preschool at Baker.
Okay, I've been asking questions and we've had so many different plans. I think in my mind, they're all crossing over.
Yeah, no, it's just the high school that's moving to Baker.
And we have no plans to tear apart that school down at this point?
Nope.
Not just for my benefit for other people because they've been asking questions and I just wanted to make sure.
No, there's no plans to tear anything down at this point. There has been no money set aside to do so and right now it's it's going to be there. We might run it out to community. We don't know. You know what? We're keeping it for right now.
Okay, just like I said, making sure for somebody who's watching has an idea of what we're doing.
Absolutely.
But I just wanted to say thank you, everybody, especially congratulations to Billy and Mary. Keep up the good work. They do a good job and. I know that they're going to continue to do that. So thank you. Congratulations. As far as the first week of school, I know it was hectic and crazy. Out there watching this, you know, we have police wrecking traffic and maintenance and grounds and everybody else. And I think the first week was the worst of it. Like we've alluded to that, you know, we've been on virtual for over a year and, you know, people are just getting back to the swing of it and no buses. And it was a little hectic, but I think it's from what I've been watching, it's really gotten a whole lot better. So. It's just growing pains, you know, and eventually I'm sure Alfie will find some way to help us out. Between that and hiring some new drivers and stuff, so. But other than that, I think we're off to a good start and looking forward to a great see a great year. So, thank you.
Okay, Alex?
Yep, thank you all for coming tonight, virtually, of course. I would like to congratulate again our honorees tonight. Welcome as well to all of our new hires. And thank you to all staff that are helping make this return to in-person schooling. Both possible as well as safe for our students. You know, this is not a year we've ever done before. So, you know, this is all new and, you know, we're all doing our respective parts to make sure that, you know, our students and staff are safe. So thank you. Good night.
Very good. Matt?
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to say congratulations to Mary and. To Mary and Billy for their Cardinal awards today. Your hard work as well. We appreciate it and it does go unnoticed every day. So thank you for your guys' hard work and congratulations to our new hires, Nancy and Kayla. And the additional one that didn't kind of make it today, congratulations and welcome to the Cardinal family. We're glad to have you guys on the team and we know you guys will do a fabulous job. I also want to say thank you to Alfie and Kayden and all the administration teams. That are working hard to make this transition from virtual to in-person the best that we can, as quickly as possible. I don't think anybody would have thought that we wouldn't have any speed bumps or any hiccups. It's the name normal stuff that happens every year when we go from in-person in-person every year, right? Things happen, things come about. This year is is completely different. We have supply chain issues all across the world, not only in food administration. And just then for schooling, we have the automotive industry with the chip. So if you if you haven't been paying attention to the news. The chip store has been going on for like since day one, okay? It's the same things. It's the same process. Nobody was working, right? So these orders go through is a process to get the supply chain fulfilled, okay? Next thing you're going to hear is you're not going to have TVs and dishwasher soon, okay? So it's going to continue to go until everything is back to normal. So please be diligent and respectful. And be patient and let us, the school board, the administration, principals know what your concerns are and then we can get to those as quickly as possible. So thank you, everyone. Have a great evening and continue doing the excellent work you guys do. You guys are part of the Cardinal family. You equal us. We we believe the Cardinal, okay? So enjoy you guys' evening and thank you very much.
Real good, Matt. Thank you. Just to round it out, myself, I went to and I have to go over at Strong. And Alfie's crew did a real good job. They went from Ohio, they ran over to. Then from the junior. To Allendale, plus to you and your crew back. And it was it was hard to do, take away from your duties, but I want to thank. Teachers, the sports staff, everybody's been out there doing their part, trying to make the position good. Like I already said earlier, it was fun to see all those kids come back, even at Shannon's school, where Shannon had it. All the kids getting out of the car. You'd be back and face the fakeness. I met with all the administrators and. Can I? Every day, trying to do the best we can. I gave her an idea today and I'm going to follow up on it. Hopefully we can get some staff as some bus drivers. So we're doing everything that we can to get support staff in there, get our bus drivers. And get some people to direct traffic. So we're doing the best we can. And I hope everybody stick in there and do and get this thing back our concern. So. Every day we come up with something new, right Jim? We always get something.
Right. Today we called Michigan Works. So Mr. Berry had me call Michigan Works and we filed with them for a job, so.
Yeah, I was at a meeting and at one of my book clubs and everything and I was telling Kim, some of the people in Wayne Westland are leaving and then they says. Can you send me a flyer? I told Kim, I don't think that's a good idea right now. But we have other ways to get their their bus drivers have been quitting too, so. But anyhow, we're going to do the best we can and I want to thank the parents for cooperating. When I was out on the line over at Strong, the parents are, talked to a few of them. They're really cooperating. So it's a little, it'll inconvenience, but I know some were carpooling, which made it nice too. Yeah, so I'm going to cut this off. I want to thank everybody. What they do. Now introduce a motion to adjourn. We have a motion. Not by a one time.
Support.
Who made the motion, Amber?
Sure, Amber.
Amber and Alex?
Yeah.
Yep.
Sounds great.
Okay, roll call, Matt.
Karen Lang?
Yes.
Hamden Herrera?
Yes.
Jim Berry?
Yes.
Matthew Rader, yes. Alex Antoski?
Yes.
Amber Cochran?
Yes.
Mike Colmorgan?
Yes.
Good night, everybody.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Have a good night. Talk to you guys soon. Take care. Bye.
Good night and thank you, everyone.
Good night.